We're about to start the city council meeting here just a little bit. We're going to have an invocation and we're going to do the pledge. Let's find my sheet, find out who's doing everything.
Gabe's doing the pledge.
Okay, Gabe's gonna do the pledge and we got our confidence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We would like to remember tonight the Ware family. I think you all know Richie Ware and Dennis Perkins. And I think Dennis' mother-in-law, Richie's mother, fell as passed. And we want to remember them in prayer tonight before we show up. Please bow with me. Father, we bring the Ware family to you, the Perkins and all those who are related, that new Phyllis Ware. We ask you to wrap your loving arms around these families and give them comfort in their grief and their time of loss. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. We thank you, Lord, as we lift up our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular this assembled council. I ask that you grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and the issues of our times. Give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our citizens, as well as a thirst for justice and rightness. Grant them the confidence to stand for what is right, and yet the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. At last, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around the city of Connersville. And we will not neglect to say thank you for your abundant blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. This being our regular city council meeting for September the 21st, 2015, I'll ask that our treasurer to please make the roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Present.
The records show six of seven of the city councils here. We have a forum and we can do business. I'd ask you to please turn your phones on silent or librate, whichever.
Leave them home.
Or leave them home. Yeah, it's kind of late for that. And then I welcome all of you tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate Eric praying for Dennis' mother-in-law and Richie's mother. It's kind of a Richie is the chaplain for the police department and Dennis Perkins is the assistant chief of police. And so we appreciate that tonight and we send our soul to that family. Have the reading of the minutes of the September 8th regular meeting.
I make a motion we pass the minutes of the last meeting. Ezra.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second that we approve the minutes as they were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Resolution 2015-37, we're going to receive $300 back from the police department for telephone. And what that is, is some of the police officers upgraded their telephone and they reimbursed the city because we only pay for a basic phone. So receiving $300 back for this month, I don't think that's a real hard resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
I move a separate resolution, 2015-37.
Any discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carried. The next two resolutions before you, you have information, I hope you all got to read it. If you'd please, Mr. Hoffman and your attorney, come to the podium. This young man on my right and your left is Mr. Julian Hoffman, and he's proposing to start a new business in Connersville. And to make it real simple, it's in the old D&amp;M building, south of where the college is now, Ivy Tech and IU East. And he's been working on this for some time. And he has his attorney with him from Chicago. That's way far off. And would you introduce your attorney, Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, Chris Hansen from Chicago.
Okay. And he represents you tonight?
Yes.
Okay. The economic development director and myself have been working with Julian and we've put together a tax abatement that you allowed us to advertise. And so tonight, we are required to have a public hearing. So I am going to open that public hearing at this point. And that allows anybody in the audience to ask questions. It especially allows you folks to ask questions up here. You have the paperwork behind you or before you, and they will try to answer the questions or they will answer the questions. So I'm gonna open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing resolution 2015-38. Are there any questions?
Yeah, can you explain the nature of your business?
What?
Can you explain the nature of your business?
Yeah, building pre-stressed concrete panels and pallets, manufacturing.
So is it like the forms that you could sell for like houses and then they?
It's farming, that's correct, yes.
Okay. And when do you plan on starting?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Will it be a great deal of renovation required for the buildings for you to use?
Yeah, we have to spend about $10 million to fix it up over about 18 months.
I see.
Yeah.
And how many buildings will you be using?
What?
How many buildings will you be using?
We'll use quite a bit of the building over there at the D&amp;M plant.
Okay.
How many people do you plan to hire?
Approximately 100.
Great, thank you.
Do you currently own the property?
What?
Do you currently own the property?
We have a contract on it. And if it's subject to getting the inducements from you people, we would close. We're still doing our due diligence on the record.
Mr. Hoffman, I understand you surveyed some of the property over there. You intend to sell some of the property after you get it in your name, is that what you intend to do?
We're not really interested in selling any part of it. Eventually, we hope to use a great deal of it.
Okay.
Yeah. Property's in pretty rough shape. We have to spend a lot of money. They haven't done much short over the years, but the infrastructure is very good.
You see the guy in the blue shirt down there?
Yeah.
He worked in there for 55 years.
Okay. 30 years. 30 years. Glenn Smith is our consultant.
Yes, Glenn Smith was our, he was our plant engineer for about 30 years.
Okay, I was with him this afternoon and he will stay on with fees when he goes back to Florida. He'll have a consulting fee. Very helpful.
Fine, he's a good man.
Anybody in the room have anything they'd like to ask? This is a public hearing, it's open to the public.
What kind of pay rate will there be for these employees?
From 15, from 12 to 15 to 17 dollars.
Benefits?
What?
Will they have insurance?
We intend to have benefits, yes.
Is this the only abatement you plan on asking for, or are you planning on asking for the stormwater for like a?
Possibly later date, yes.
Okay. How long will it take you to get this operation?
We hope to be going in the next four months or so. The problem is, there's no drawings on all of the plants, and that is, that can delay it. There's nothing. So we have to, we're gonna have to redraw a great deal of it.
Are you able to be able to use any railcar access to that?
What?
Are you able to use the railcar access to that?
Yes, we intend to use the rail and be very beneficial there. It's very important. The plant has a lot of infrastructure capabilities, it just hasn't been used. A lot of cosmetics have to be done.
You plan on tearing any buildings down, like the porcelain plant?
No, 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 we intend, the only one possibly would be the porcelain, the porcelain plant, but outside of that, we intend to keep it all and renovate it.
And we have salary and?
What?
We have salary, salary and hourly employees?
What'd she say? Yes, we will, they will.
Do you know how many offices?
Yeah.
Do you know about how many salary employees you're at?
How many salary employees?
100.
No, out of the 100, how many hourly employees salary?
They would be all employed by our company, salary, if that's what you mean.
Okay.
Yeah, they'd be employed by our company with the benefits.
Is this a brand-new startup company, or is this a?
It's not a startup, but a, it's been in the process for a number of years with a lot of research of what it would be good. But a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you for that.
I can't hear.
I said thank you for looking at us.
It's got a lot of potential.
Sir, do you have a present manufacturing plant somewhere that?
No, this is, this is where we're doing it here, no.
I see.
Yeah.
Do you have any past experience in?
Oh, yeah, a lot of past experience with the people that they've done. They're all basically around my age, very, a lot of experience.
Are you from Connersville?
What?
Are you from Connersville?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Chicago.
Oh.
So what brings you here?
What?
So what brings you here?
We think that the plant, the railroad has a great potential because it's one of the few places in the country where you have the two railroads coming in in one location, and that's the CXS in the north and southern. And that has great, that, that has great potential.
What assurances do we have you plan to start within a?
What?
What assurances do we have that you'd start within a year's time? I'll give you a little history. A few years back, we had a company come in similar, with a kind of similar idea with the potential for very promising jobs called Carbon Motors. And they did some similar stuff, and the company just kind of fell apart. And it really took a long time to get started. So what kind of assurances would we have that you would start within the timeframe that you specified?
Well, we need the product, but something else too. We ask nothing of the city unless we produce. We ask nothing of the community unless we produce to get the abatements. And I'm familiar with what took place, and I think there was a great deal of money spent. We ask nothing from the community. The proof will be in the action.
Are you gonna have, what kind of job experience will the people need to have to work there?
Semi-skilled, semi-skilled manufacturing.
Okay.
It's basically manufacturing.
Okay.
It is manufacturing.
A funny story is, my dad worked at D&amp;M for 30, 40 years.
Okay.
And I believe he met you.
Who is it?
Well, I'm not gonna say his name, but he drives over there and likes to reminisce about the, about the old days.
Okay.
And he told me about a man with a cane, and I really kind of thought he was crazy starting up something, so I'm really glad to hear this.
Okay, I'm very fond of Glenn Smith, if that's the?
No, no, no. But I'm very happy that you're, that you're taking that building and doing something.
People have been most helpful.
Mm-hmm.
And?
I think he spoke with you for something about the building, but yeah.
Very related.
Glenn Smith was the city engineer here for a long time.
What'd you say, sir?
Glenn Smith was the city engineer here for a long time.
Right, 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 right. We're gonna retain him as a consultant in Florida as well. He's been very helpful.
Sir, do you have an existing customer base, or is this all new sales?
What'd you say?
Do you have an existing customer base, or is this all brand-new sales?
No, it's not brand-new. We know where the firsts are going.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So you already have pre-existing orders then?
We have the potential pre-existing orders, and we're really almost behind schedule. So the sooner we get going, the better.
Okay. Is this similar to what ATMI does up in Greenfield?
I don't, I'm not familiar with that.
Pre-stressed concrete walls?
Okay, yeah, these are pre-stressed concrete panels, 32 by 8, Halli Court.
Are you planning on using local companies for?
Of course, for supply, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking to various suppliers now.
Okay.
And they're very excited about it. Halli Court, pre-stressed panel.
Anybody else? None appearing, I'm going to close the public hearing. And the city council will take action. I have his report card in front of me. You know, we have a method of scoring this. His total score was 32. The abatement committee met, and the abatement committee is recommending a 10-year abatement on the real property with a phase-in period of 10% each year. And a, on the second resolution on the?
Actually, the first resolution's equipment, the second one's?
And the second one is real property. The first one is the equipment. On the equipment, the abatement committee recommends a five-year with a 20% phase-in each year for five years. Is that sufficient?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. That's what they recommend. I have the resolution before you, resolution 15, 2015-38. You've had it since Friday. What's your pleasure?
I got a question for John first.
I have a question first. As my understanding, it wasn't adding 20 per year. It started at 100 and went down 20%?
Yes, the 20% per year.
Yeah.
That's right. That's a declining.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Same with the equipment.
I have a question for John. John, I'm a little worried that this might, this abatement might take a long time to take an effect if it takes longer than the year, I think you said, to get up and running. When would the abatement, when was the sunset on this abatement?
I think Dan Parker has some insight into that, that he can talk to you about.
This abatement is like a performance-based. If the, if Mr. Hoffman fails to perform what he stated in the application with employees, equipment, or improvements to the building, then it's null and void.
Yeah, I get that, but my question is, let's say it takes us 10 years to start, and then the scorecard would change quite a bit significantly, I mean, potentially. This abatement would still be good if it took that long to go into effect, is that correct?
That would be above my pay grade. That would be, go back to John.
It would be good as long as he hires the employees and invests the amount of money he's agreed to invest in the people he's agreed to hire.
But in 10 years' time, it may be vastly different. In 10 years' time, the climate might become vastly different. I mean, we don't know what the climate's gonna hold then.
We don't.
Is there any way to put any kind of sunsets in these, like the abatement's good for two years or one year?
The state statute doesn't allow for that, nor do our ordinances provide for that. We would have to go back to the beginning and see if it would be possible. I'm not aware of one we've ever done that way.
One of the things to consider on this is that MEG has all but moved out, that's the other occupant. I have tried my hardest to find occupants in business to go out and build without any success. Mr. Hoffman presents an opportunity here, as you've seen before, even in the documents, that cost is not.
Don't get me wrong, I think this is a great thing.
Right.
I just worry about it taking a very long time. I'm trying to look out for the city's best interest, especially in light of what we had in the recent past.
Well, and that was a city-owned property, where this is not.
Yeah.
This is owned by Bud Vetter in Mansfield, Ohio. And the agreements are with Bud and with your own.
So will the ownership of the property actually transfer?
Yes.
He's under, he has a contract with him now. So it would totally be different than what we had at this, and I understand your concern.
I see the difference, I just worry about the length of, maybe to start with something this size, it may take a substantial amount of time to get started.
But given that building's history, since D&amp;M went down, and looking forward in the future, this is our best hope right here.
I can also tell you, before Dan came, I showed that building. I don't know how many years we showed that building. We showed it to all kinds of people, and we couldn't get anybody into it. We were thrilled when MEG came in there and rented it and employed some people there for a long time. But there were several companies, I'd say six, seven different companies we brought in and looked at that. And even after you came, we went in, the doors were not sealed good. Birds were flying and the animals were living in there. It was, it was tough to rent. But I understand your concern, because I don't want to get into that, to where we were tied down.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at to hire the estimate of 100 people?
With over a 12-month period.
Over a 12-month?
Yeah. Yeah, it could be a little longer, a little shorter.
And when you say semi-skilled factory workers, what does that mean?
That they have manufacturing, it's primarily, it's a manufacturing plant, that they've worked in concrete, or they've worked in that type of area.
In, in concrete?
Yeah. And we were training them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Number one question, I'm ready for you to?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was looking at this score, and it's extremely high score. Apparently, the gentleman's willing to invest approximately $10 million. The tax abatement committee gave us a favorable recommendation.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we pass resolution 2015-38.
Second.
I have a motion before you to pass resolution 2015-38. This is a?
Tom, you need to approve the time period?
Would you both agree?
No, the time period and the 20% or 10%.
Five-year abatement.
Yeah.
The five-year?
He said he approved it as the committee, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You approved exactly what the committee said.
What the committee recommends.
Yes.
You approved the committee recommendations.
Yes.
That's what I thought you said, I'm sorry. And that, as I read in the first place, would be on the, there's really two resolutions here, 38 and 39, and you want to take them together?
I would like?
Real property and the equipment?
I would like to take both of them together.
I'll stick to that.
Okay. So what, his motion is that we accept the real property for 10 years, phasing it in 20% each year, and the personal property for five years, excuse me, phasing it in 20% each year, and the other is 10%.
10%, right.
Okay. You understand?
Yes.
And your attorney understands?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody else on the council with us? Questions? Discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Well, the one is $10,600,000, and the other one is $20,253,848. Have I made the motion in the second?
Yep.
I'm right to vote?
You're ready for the question? Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Choma?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
You have passed resolution 2015-38. You have adopted those two resolutions, and we'll take care of those. It's a done deal.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I understand you met one of my friends in Richmond, Jeff Locke.
Yes.
Jeff used to sit down there where the blue shirts, sitting.
Oh, okay.
He was the city council in here for several years, and then he moved to Richmond, so he resigned.
Okay.
And so?
We're talking to a lot of suppliers in the area.
Okay, well, we want you to get most of your suppliers right here in Connersville if you can.
That's why I keep telling Dan, that's why I keep telling Dan, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you for coming down from Chicago.
My pleasure, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Let us know how it goes.
Okay, absolutely. I talk to Dan all the time.
Yeah, well, we'll see you over there. I understand you've been?
Yeah, we're there.
Moseying around, okay.
We're there in the office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item D, resolution 2015-40, transferring money from the airport. And I'll let Gene explain that. Remember, this is airport money.
The Rotary Fund is a fuel fund. Indiana codes state that when a fuel fund reaches a certain amount, it has to be transferred into the airport fund. And that's what this is. We have reached an amount where we're outside of the percentage. We're approaching the percentage that the state and federal allows us to have in that fund. So consequently, we have to move it from that fund into the airport fund so it can be used for other properties, other things.
So Gene, you're saying you're making good money over there?
Sir?
You're making good money over there?
No.
It's been a long time coming.
It's been a while, but, but the jet traffic's picking up.
That's outstanding.
That's 6,500 foot runway, now that new acre.
Wonderful, that's great news.
Those pilots are loving it.
Loving it. It's a nice place, it's really nice.
Just for. Anything else?
Good problem to have.
Don't go too far, because we'll need you for the next thing too.
It just, yeah, that, the airport is going into the airport fund, and that still can be distributed. It cannot be distributed out of the Rotary Fund.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second that we accept the $15,000 into the airport fund, from, I call it the gasoline fund, you call it the Rotary Fund. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2003, this is?
Pending ordinance.
Oh, pending ordinance, excuse me, 3203. This is an additional appropriation in the airport, and we're up for a public hearing. Public hearing is open. And you want to come up and explain that and answer the questions too? He's the airport president. I should have said that at the beginning.
The city council, we submit a budget, and the city council looks at and approves that budget, and it's set at X amount of dollars. When we have something come up that we need a few dollars for, we appropriate money like this will be fuel fund into the airport fund, then it'll be appropriated into our budget. This does not mean that our budget will be increased by the council or anybody else. It's the same budget, this is our money. I say our money, I mean airport money that we've accumulated. So it will be transferred into the budget under an item number so that we can use it then. We want to purchase some furniture, is that right, John?
Yes, for the new terminal.
Outstanding.
And then we need to do the match money for Taxiway B, the new construction.
But that's, that's what that means.
$11,000 for Taxiway B and $3,000 for furniture fixtures.
Yeah.
Everybody understand?
We're gonna be having an open house, aren't we? Yeah, yeah, national sponsor one of these days. Hopefully, before it gets zero.
You don't have a date yet?
What?
You don't have a date?
You don't have a date?
What's that?
I need a motion if you're all in here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance 3203.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3204 on first reading.
3203.
Did I read the wrong one again?
3203.
I'm sorry, yeah, 3203. Sometimes these glasses are not...
Brad, you want to read that for him?
I'll have to watch him.
He has to go back to the home.
You deserve that with that 55 years.
I guess, if you work 55 years, I gotta go to the home.
Best be careful, he may take you with him.
Pending ordinance 3203 on first reading, have a real call vote.
Councilman Chomol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nabi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules so we consider pending ordinance 3203 on third and final reading, putting $11,000 in a Taxiway B construction fund and $3,000 in furniture fixtures at the airport. Suspension rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, you can move forward if you might.
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we consider pending ordinance 3203 on third and final reading. I'm not going to read what it is, I've done it twice, you ought to know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have pending ordinance and 3204, 3205, and 3206. If you remember, we've been told about the problem up there on Coolidge and Junkin Avenue. I've had the police department and others go up there and we've studied it, and their recommendation is, and you have it in your packet, I find it, that we place stop signs...
You got the additional stop sign?
Additional stop sign, I've got it written in here, I gotta just be able to read it.
Okay.
At the northeast corner of Sixth and Maple Avenue, the northeast corner of Coolidge Avenue and Junkin Street, and the northeast on Junkin Street, a do not enter sign. Believe me, we've done a lot of studying up there, this will fix the problem, and we need to put it in our traffic pattern. It was a mess over there, they were going two ways on a one-way and then entering from an alley. So, if any of you have gone up there, you know what we're doing.
Is there a way to pull this up so the folks here can see that?
No, I tried to do that, and that is drawn so small up there, I could have had him redraw it, but I don't think you can see it. Can you enlarge Junkin Street, John? I looked it up on Diana's GIS, and it is so small. I can't see it.
So, where's Sixth and Maple at in relation to that?
I think it's a different area.
Junkin right there, John.
It's right by the apartment, right there.
Yeah.
Gabe, I think that's a separate area.
It has to be.
It is, Maple's over by it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Maple's off of Eighth, and then like on top of Eighth Street, you know, Beach and Oak.
Yeah. That's what I was talking about.
Here's where the stop sign would be.
Add a stop sign.
Here, and I'd leave this, must be the alley that comes into it. This would be a do not enter stop sign over here. Believe me, they've studied it, they've got it figured out, it's taken about four, five weeks to figure it out.
So...
Because people are going both ways on a one-way street.
This first one, though, says Sixth and Maple, on the northeast corner of Sixth and Maple.
I'm sure that's right, but I'm like Maple.
No, it's got to be Fifth Street.
It should be Houston Street.
So, is this, we're talking two different locations? Is there another reason to put them?
But that's not Sixth, I think these are two separate issues.
David's $7,000 got in for the last day, and I didn't require him to come tonight, and of course Dennis's mother-in-law passed away, and I didn't ask him to come tonight, so you're stuck with... He and I really don't know any more than what I've read to you. The northeast corner of Junkin Street, and the northeast and the southeast corner of Coolidge and Junkin Street, which I showed you, and the southeast corner of Sixth Street and Maple. And I'm like you, Connie, I think it's two different issues.
Sixth is Three Streets.
Yeah, it's way over there.
If you want to table it, I can table it until one of them can be here to draw it for you.
Well, Mayor, I think...
He's got it figured out.
I think the one with Coolidge and Junkin, we need to address that, because I think that's where the Packer track has to go in.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we need to take care of these. Do you have a problem with that then?
I think that sounds good.
But I think it's just two different issues.
So, you want to talk about pending ordinance 3205 and pending ordinance 3206?
Yes.
And leave pending ordinance 3204 for other time?
We, Your Honor, I think we can take all of them.
Take all three?
Anybody have a problem with that?
I just don't know what the 3204 is.
The one at Sixth and Maple?
Yeah. That's got to be on down.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's on the other side of the...
It's just a stop sign.
Because you're asking for a stop sign.
Not changing the flow of anything, it's just, and I'm assuming that the police did this out of a complaint or a concern.
Well, if you remember, we had a couple of gentlemen in here that have complained to us two or three times.
Yeah.
And then we have trouble with our trash truck because they go halfway down there and this car's sitting right in the middle of the alley. It's really not an alley, it's a street.
Can we pull up Sixth and Maple?
The Junkin.
I don't remember hearing about Maple, but that doesn't...
There's Maple.
Where's Sixth, John? Put the arrow on Sixth. Okay, he wants to put a stop sign there.
Is that a T Street, is that what that is, going into maybe the trailer court?
So, that's...
Yeah. Well, we leave that alone until he can be here to explain to us.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just pass the other two ordinances so they can fix what's wrong.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we vote on pending ordinance 3205 and pending ordinance 3206.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance 3205, 3206 in the traffic ordinance. Any discussion? All of them we've had. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider those two ordinances on third and final reading?
Some of...
Got a motion and a second, we consider pending ordinance 3205 and 3206, both traffic ordinances, on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did I suspend this idea?
Well, suspension...
Okay. Would you like to move on?
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we consider pending ordinance 3205 and 3206 on third and final reading. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'm sorry, I thought they were going to be here tonight, I just found out today that they weren't going to be here. And we would have had that all explained.
Yeah, this is the Maple one, that makes sense.
This is Sixth, goes into the one-way on Maple. Let me back up.
That makes sense.
So, you're coming in on Maple, there's a stop sign here, but there's not one over here.
And then these three...
Yeah, we could do that one.
Yeah, let's pass that through.
Yeah, let's do that too.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Pending ordinance 3204.
I would like to make a motion, we pass pending ordinance 3204.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance 3204 on first reading, that's adding a stop sign at the northeast corner of Sixth Street and Maple. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to suspend the rules and consider on third and final reading?
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3204 placing a stop sign at the northeast corner of Sixth and Maple Street. All in favor of suspension rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Like to move forward.
Some of...
Second.
Motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance 3204 on third and final reading, placing a stop sign at the northeast corner of Sixth and Maple Street. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Boy, you can really dig in on that, John. I didn't know we could get that.
Yeah.
I always ask Diana to get it on a GIS, and it's the time you gotta have a...
Yeah, Google Earth, it's all kinds of crazy stuff.
Okay. Moving forward. Department head reports, Gene, you want to get yours first?
Mr. Mayor, Julie, ladies and gentlemen of common council, I'm back. Our grants are closing out, the grant area, 600 square yards of concrete, six inches deep, on 16 inches of compacted asphalt earth, with some in addition, 84,000 pounds, dual-wheel airplane capacity, finished. We had three panels that were standing water quarter of an inch during a rainfall. Everything else drains, it's programmed into the way it was laid out, so it will drain to the east and to the northeast. However, there were three panels in front of the hangar where water stood long enough to leave sediment, so that won't handle it. So, we've got a straight edge, and it was about 3/16 to a quarter of an inch, which is out of specs, eight inches is all there allowed. So, they came in and tore out 90 square feet of it, I'm sorry, the three panels, yeah, about 300 square feet of it, and replaced it. All three panels were replaced. It does not hold water now, or runs off of it. The painting is done, it just looks great. The building is completed. There's a little glitch on the closing out of that grant, but we're going to get that done. It's not our fault. The FAA, Rob Esquivel, from the FAA and Chicago Regional Office, and Marty Blake, he's the manager of the Indiana Aviation Department, came in Wednesday morning at 8:30 for a visit and to inspect how we spent our grants. They were beside themselves. Jeff and Travis had a place looking like a park, like it usually does, and they were aghast at just how everything fits together. New building, which we saved a ton of money on that building, the ramp area, which we saved another $30,000 on by having it done, it's the first one in Indiana that's been done this way, and everybody's, come in and look at it because it's so strong and so good. We also last week signed another grant, $138,000 and change, to resurface the old Taxiway, the Taxiway that's been there since 1940, from our new Taxiway that was completed two years ago. It will be resurfaced within the next week or two. That's $138,000 as part of the transfer of funds tonight, so we can pay our share of that grant. And when that's done, we're done.
Gene, I know what you're doing up there, we guys are doing a great job with all those grants, my word.
Thank you. It's five of us, and we all live here, and we don't have to contend with any heat or anything, we just come in, do our job.
That's great.
And it's fun, it really is fun. And Mr. Esquivel, this really perked me up, and Marty, Marty's been an advocate for us for a long time. Marty Blake supplied us with $400,000 last year to complete that building. He didn't have to do that, but in doing so, it saved the state about $35,000, and it also got our building done in one year. This project was to take three years, we got it done in one. And we save them money, and they're very pleased about that. Mr. Esquivel, and I just, boy, I tell you what, I was floating when he said this, he said, "You guys have done a good enough job, I'm going to advocate for you if you need anything in the future."
He told them we need a new fence, didn't he?
Overlay, overlay, and so we'll get that, sir.
I said, "You told them we need a new fence, didn't you?"
Yes, that's in the plan, that's in the C I P. And the runway is in the plan too, and that's going to be done over a period of three years. It'll be done three stages, they'll come in, grind it, do a section, then they'll come back and grind another section, lay it, do that for three years till, and what is this, 1518, we ought to have a brand-new overlaid runway. So, at that particular time, then we'll start looking at fencing, and we're going to try to do the fencing maybe at the same time. We're going to see, he was so enthused with what we had accomplished, that he said, "You people need a fence." "We do, we really do." And he said, "Well, let's work on that, but we need that runway overlay." Well, we got into a program, a voluntary program about five years ago, I just happened to see it one night on the website, looking through the FAA website, if you sign up for this program and go by the rules and regs that they put down in this program, which is nothing more than crack sealing and keeping it clean, then you're eligible for an overlay. So, that's how we're getting our overlay.
Outstanding.
And we're in great shape, our jet traffic is picking up because it's such a nice place to come. And if you're flying a $40 million jet, and you've got your choice between 5,000 and 5,500 foot of runway and 6,500, you're going to opt for that 6,500 because that extra 15,000 feet can be a matter of life and death if something goes sideways. So, that's where we stand, and the FAA's, that was, that can be a contentious relationship if you don't do it right. And fortunately, with the help of our consultants, we've been able to do it right, and Julie's a big part of that too. So, it's just a team effort, everybody works together, we don't feud and fight, we disagree maybe on some things, but it never gets ugly or nasty, and we work together and we get it done.
Great.
Gene, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And anyway, I'll get you the dates down here, we're gonna, I'll get on the consultant about that, they're going to pay for it, we're not, so, I'll get on him and get that deck to you for everybody knows. Thank you.
Good job, thank you very much.
Good evening again. First of all, thank you for passing that abatement for Jerome Hoffman. I just want to report, I just completed a trip to New Jersey and New York City, meeting with property owners, land management companies, site selectors, and had a good trip. I, what I do, and of course, you can't bring a lot of literature, so I give them this card, which is brand-new, so I'll give you each one of the cards, I'm not going to run you through the whole spiel, but I'll give you, here, Julie, you have a card, and Mayor, you have a card, and this works out perfect.
It's looking good, Dan.
Thank you. Flip it over on the backside. Now, that's my elevator speech for Connersville, Fayette County, to tell them very quickly that we sit right in the middle of the automotive supply beltway, that we have an abundance of water, that we have available space, that we are pro-business, that we give abatements, that we are willing to work with anyone who would be willing to come to our town and sign up for some progress and jobs. Had good conversations with one, and our water was a hit. Turn over on the front side of that card, you see where it says ACT, Work Ready Community, that was another hit. Workforce development is a big deal. Having its place to come work is one thing, getting abatements in the government to sign on that is another, but if you don't have people to work, if you don't have a trained workforce, if you don't have a talent pool, it's real hard. That last part is difficult. And so, what we're doing is investing in workforce development. One of the things that I'm engaged in right now, along with Henry and Rush, is we're applying for a $250,000 O C, a workforce development grant, that could very well help us in training people that can't afford to sign up for certain classes, or can't, you know, really stand the expense of learning how to become a CNC operator, or to run a high-speed lathe. So, that can be very helpful, we're in the process of doing that. That is really all that I have to tell you tonight, just a short presentation, unless you have any questions for me.
I do.
Okay.
How are we coming along on the number of employees for the Work Ready, the ACT program? I know we were short a few last month.
We are 43 short in transitioning, Gabe, good question. And I just keep hammering Work One, I have a good relationship with Work One, in fact, we're going to have the CEO at our board meeting here this coming week, Mike Rouse is going to be down here to speak to us. We are really lockstep with Work One, with ACT, and in doing everything we can to help enrich our talent pool and get people that feel like they can't go up the next level to help them get there.
How long do we have to meet that? How long do we have to meet that?
We have two years to get that fourth year. So we will knock that, if not this year, early next year. We and Henry went in together during this, during this past year, a little in fourteen and a little bit in fifteen. And we're right at about the same percentage of completion. They're ninety percent complete, on the way to being certified gold, and we're right at the same ninety percent.
Excellent.
But they have a lot higher number of employees to secure than we did. We really, we're really good at forty-three. Everything else, we are over. But we do, transitioning employees is where we're at.
Sounds great.
Good question. Anyone else?
One of our problems is that when Vistaian closed, a lot of our people went out of town to go to work. Those people would love to come back here and work here and live here, but they're not going to quit their job until there's a certainty here. And by what Dan is doing, eventually those jobs will open up here, maybe even some that we opened up tonight. And then they'll want to come back here. But when we look at our numbers, our numbers look low because those people are what we call underemployed. But eventually, I think it's going to right itself because who wants to drive to Greensburg and Shelbyville?
One of the reasons I took this job and applied for this job, just to stop community. I'm a five-minute drive from my home to work, and I love that. Twenty-two years doing that Cricket Road debates bill was awful. I love this. And I love the work. And I appreciate you guys helping out with the abatement and being proactive and pro-business. I really do appreciate it. Nothing else, I'll get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
You bet.
Fire department. I think I saw him sitting back there.
For the month of August, we had a hundred and twenty-one runs, sixteen inspections, twelve investigation, eight pre-plans, a hundred and twenty-seven hours of training. Our overtime ran twenty-three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents in overtime. F L S A was eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and two cents, or a total of three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. This afternoon, we had to ask for more money from the Board of Works to be transferred because as of this week, we got up to five workers being on, off on sixty. It's down to two right now. And the other three are back. One of them was injured on the fire. We've had a rash of fires up in the Seventh Street area. They've been suspicious in nature. They're under investigation through the State Fire Marshal's office and us. There's a one-eight-hundred number. It's one-eight-hundred three-eight-two-four-six-two-eight. We have posters posted all over the area up there with up to a five-thousand-dollar reward for any information leading up to the arrest of anybody involved in the person setting that or setting those fires.
You said Seventh Street and where?
Up in the Seventh Street area, West Seventh, I said.
All the way to the end on the south side. They're all on the same side, haven't they?
Yeah.
What block is that?
It's up around Seventh and Garfield.
Okay.
So up in there. There've been a couple others up on the hill also that small fires have been set. Next month, we start our fire prevention with the schools. We'll go in with Sparky and we'll talk with them about fire prevention, smoke detectors. We have a smoke detector program that is co-sponsored with us and Walmart helps us where we give out smoke detectors to a grant with Walmart. And we push those. We'll talk to them about escape plans and other fire topics. And we're finishing up going around to all of our Knox boxes and cleaning them and checking to make sure all the keys work to the doors and checking the contact numbers and making sure everything works there. And we'll start testing fire hose that we do every year, and we'll move on to fire hydrants if we have time.
We'll get them done before it gets cold.
Before it gets cold, yeah.
Okay. Cost of operating your department in August, one-hundred-seventy-one thousand, two-hundred-ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
I thought Troy was going to tell you, we had twenty-two sick days and twenty-six vacation days, and one man retired in the month of August. So you can see, it's pretty rough to.
Have you been filling in with part-time?
Pardon?
Have you been filling in with part-time?
No. Part-time expired according to the contract. It had a three-year, it expired after three years. So we did get approval to advertise for full-time positions going into next year. We'll have two more leaving. Part-time wasn't really working because of the way it was designed, was to fill in when guys were on vacation. And when we went through the financial emergency, it's just so hard to call them at seven o'clock and say, hey, can you come in? Most of them had other jobs.
So there won't be any more paid part-time?
You can't under this contract. It expired.
Okay.
The contract is due next year. It'll have to be negotiated by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. EMS. He's not here tonight. We've got your report in front of you. You've got the monthly report and the year-to-date. They had a total year-end runs of one thousand six hundred and eighty-five. This month, two hundred and forty. The rest of it is self-explanatory. Cost to the city, twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven. Of course, cost to county, twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven. We collected nineteen thousand one hundred and five seventy-five. Any questions? It's in front of you. Parks Superintendent Jessica.
Revenue for the month was just shy of twenty-two thousand dollars, which brings our yearly total up to one-eight-six-five-fifty, close to that two-hundred mark. Expenditures for the month totaled sixty-six thousand dollars. Some stuff we have coming up. We've got a flyer attached to your report. We've got our Halloween party on October twenty-seventh from six to eight. It's ages, it's ages zero to ten. We have our costume contest games, snacks, prizes, and hayrides through the park, as usual. We just finished with our youth soccer sign-ups games. We just finished our second week. We've got around two-hundred and forty kids playing out there for this tour. And I'd like to throw a little shout out to my secretary, Sharon. Beginning of October, the Miller Center is booked seventeen days in a row.
Oh, wow. That's awesome.
So we were just looking through that today. A couple of the dates where somebody's decorating, like the Hope Pregnancy Dinner, they get a day for decorating because that's a big event. So we got seventeen days in a row. So it'll be busy. Any questions?
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Police, it's right there in front of you, guys. As I told you, the whole police chiefs are going tonight. I'll try to answer any questions you have. It's right there in front of you.
They ran an O P O last month?
Yes.
So is there reimbursement coming back in off that? Do we know a number?
I don't, we don't know the number until we're done.
We get an amount for the year.
Bad law reports, twelve eighty-nine citations, a hundred and eighty-three ordinance violations, two warnings, fifty-nine injuries, nine property damage accidents, sixty-one, no fatalities, and eighty-seven arrests.
Their cost was one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And there's an increase in their overtime. Do you know why?
Same reason. We're taking, we're trying to get those seven-week vacations in. And very difficult. Everybody's trying to get their vacation in before the end of the year.
Yeah, there's five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Are they about on a funds, too?
I don't think so.
You got enough money in there. We had a, when the fugitive from Michigan was here, we had to call.
We still have ten thousand left.
How much?
Ten thousand.
We've got ten thousand left. We should make the end of the year okay. When the fugitive from Michigan was here, we had two extra police officers. We've had some events where we've had to have a couple extra police officers. We are using part-time in the police department. We have three at this time, right? We're using.
Three or four.
Three or four.
What, our max is five for them, correct?
We don't have a contract with them. We've been using pretty much whatever we want. They haven't said anything. Got a couple of Cambridge City police and I forget where else. I think one, two of the sheriff's deputies helped us. I was really impressed tonight. We had the nine-one-one service. Joey Laufman gave his talk. And he said that the sheriff's department, the state, and the city police had the best, some of you were in the room, had the best relationship the last five years they've had. They're all working together. I can vouch for that. They work together. Julie said to me today, she said, man, we got a lot of state police officers around here. I might not, shouldn't say it on TV, but we have offices in the basement, and we still run the task force out of the basement. And we're still working that. So we have parole officers, we have state police, we have conservation officers. They all worked together when they got the guy out in Westwood. Street Department.
Good evening, one and all. One thing I would like to talk about, you see the sheet, everything that we've been doing and have been doing and still doing. But the last two weeks, we've had trouble with the trash truck. And we've had to get one from C G S and it ran so much slower. The transmission, of course, it was under warranty. Transmission went out and we had to get it fixed. Anyway, the new, the truck we borrowed from C G S, we had some trouble with it and it doesn't cycle as quick as our truck. And so there's some overtime going to be happening next time on your sheets. Sheets, I want everybody to know that we're best to cook what we had. But we're back running with one truck now and we're good. So things ought to be okay now.
It was a part in the transmission. The transmission wasn't actually out. It was a defective part.
We had to go to take a Dean apples to get it worked on because it was under warranty.
Your total for August was higher than usual, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand eight eight hundred and seventy-five. Was there any reason for that, Julie? Was there a payment on something?
I think we paid for the blacktopping.
Yes, a little bit.
Paid for the blacktopping bill.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you much.
Thank you, guys.
The gentleman's Mike.
I missed Tom.
Did I miss Tom? I'll get Tom, don't you worry.
Hello.
Hello.
Report should be attached. Revenue report.
She put my name back.
It was a good month.
No, yours was right.
The downs is all went out on three areas. Water, sewer, stormwater, overtime. We had a little bit of overtime in the wastewater treatment center. We had a couple vacations. Oh, the forty-three-hundred, two thousand was sewer plant. Work orders, we have thirty-eight work orders for the month. Project updates, we did sell the back truck to a company in, or a company in Lafayette, contractor, for twenty-one thousand dollars. Go ahead and have a new update. Pretty much done. The final walkthrough is this Thursday with I D M and Endot at ten-thirty, meet on Twenty-first Street. And we hopefully to get a good walkthrough and get this project done, finished.
Do you anticipate any problems with that?
Right now, I don't, we don't see any major problems. We'll be fine. But it's mainly Endot to check milestones work.
We've got till March before the project is spun out. And most of that will be the grass. I talked with Anna yesterday and we told her she can't plant any trees until we get that. So we'll plant trees in the spring. He added a sheet to your report tonight. Did you notice?
Yeah.
I thought it would be good, and you did, that you'd be able to see what they're doing. So these are the work orders that come down every day. That'll help you out a lot.
And that's just the water, purging the sewer crew. Also, something that's added this month is the sewer miscellaneous catch bases. I D M had a audit a few weeks ago. And we checked, we checked lift stations, but we don't really document it. They want it documented. So there'll be a work order about every week on lift stations. The guys will go check our lift stations, make sure they're running, open the box up, just make sure everything's good. But we have to document that now. So it's going to be on there, on the report from now, about four times a month.
Mike, before you run off, congratulations again on the best-tasting water in Indiana. At least we didn't make the paper in a negative way.
Absolutely.
Mike, on Central Avenue, there's a lot of water running there. Is there leaks somewhere there?
Yeah, there's a hydrant leaking. That is supposed to be fixed tomorrow, Wednesday.
Don't you have a shut-off order?
Yeah, we, last week, we had to have a company come in, put two shut-offs in because we can't shut the water off to repair it. That was done, but not as quick as we wanted it to be. So we got put off a few days. So after Wednesday, it's scheduled to be fixed. And it's a good point because, you know, there'll be one-way traffic on Central Wednesday. Not for sure how long it will take to fix.
And on Thursday, they promised me they're going to fix the hydrant in your district. If everything goes well, so you won't have any water up there. Is her house in the group?
Not for sure.
Okay. The North End will be shut off on Thursday.
She may not be on that for us. The only other thing is Brad and I was re-certified as the E R C employee responsible for these construction projects. We had grand apples last week. Set to class. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. Now I got Tom's. It was in my thing in a different order. That's good. You have my report. You have any questions? So how did you work out when the trash truck was down? Worked, did you just kind of work together? I'm sorry? How did it work out when the trash truck was down? I know we had to quit collecting on Thursday and we couldn't collect it till Friday. We, I had one of the part-time guys stay because one fellow didn't get into like six-thirty. So you had some overtime? No, we don't do overtime. You did comp time?
No.
He has part-time.
I had, he's part-time. Okay. That's, Julie shut the overtime off, remember, a year ago. Now she's mean. No, we made it work. Yeah, we didn't, on Thursday, we didn't get the route picked up. So they had to pick up part of it on Friday and do Friday's route, too. But we got the new truck back Friday morning, I think. Yeah. Yeah. Anything else, Tom? No, I'm good. Thank you. City TV.
When we built that thing back there, I never thought about having to crawl out of it.
It should have been a little hole in the front.
For the month of August, we had eleven hours, fifty-six minutes of meetings, eleven hours, twenty-two minutes of original programming. We have a new show that just started, the Spartan Sports Report, which we make on Mondays, that reports on the following, you know, previous week and then the upcoming games through Spartan Sports. And that airs weekdays at six P M. We produce several episodes now and they're actually pretty interesting. So I encourage people to tune in and check that out. We do a lot of segments where we go out and interview students and the coaches, and we have the coaches come in and interview them as well. Really, it's some interesting information. Last Friday, we produced for the first time, as long as I can remember, an away football game.
And you lost by one point. What's the deal?
I don't want to talk about it. That was rough. That was very rough. But I do encourage people to watch because there are some plays in there that Connersville did that were just amazing. And we got them in slow motion in replay. So it'll be fun to watch. That'll air this week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at eight. And we did that because we were going to take the previous game and it got rained out. So we were down our schedule. Coming up next week, a week from Thursday, of course, is the candidate forum. It'll be live on Channel Three. That'll begin at seven P M. And so we, I encourage everybody to tune in and watch, and of course, candidates to participate. So, and that'll be, like I said, a week from Thursday, October first, beginning at seven P M. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you.
Old business. Julie, you got any old business?
I will have it.
Anybody got any old business they want to bring up? I think we can. Cleaned everything up last time. This lane is business. Ruby?
No, thank you.
Tom?
I just got one thing. What's your name again?
I don't remember.
Okay. I want to talk like the soul guy. There's a letter to the editor, I think, Thursday or Friday. A gentleman wrote in regarding police funding and grants. And I really appreciate the gentleman taking the time to do that. But I do want to say, the mayor, you know, we have a, we have a full-time grants administrator, and she works with the mayor. And we are getting every grant that we can. with, with the mayor, and, and we are getting every grant that we can. In regards, there was some concern on staffing of the police department, excuse me, why, why we didn't, uh, go after a cops grant. The bad thing about that, and let me find mistaken, I want you to correct me, on these cops grants, it sounds great, where the grant pays seventy-five percent of their salary for three years. Then after that three years, the city picks up the hundred percent of the cost, and I don't think they can be laid off for five years, Fran, is that it?
I believe so, yes.
And we just don't have the money. So we're, we're doing the best we can with the, with the funding that's available. Thank you.
We, uh, we look at this, we look at that grant every year. We looked at the fire grant, we looked at that. On police grants, we've got all kinds of grants. We got, uh, best grants, we got tasers, uh, we, we've done all that. But if by attrition, the grant, the federal grant would allow you, once two or three lay, uh, retired, to keep adding to your force, but they want you to keep building your force. And if you have a police officer with a family on there, it's not only the full pay, but you got all the benefits, which is about a twenty-three thousand dollar a year insurance policy, uh, life insurance, uh, of course, uniform allowance, longevity, vacations, and when you add that all up on three police officers, but I can assure you, we apply for every grant that is available, and, uh, everything we can possibly get. Right, right now, we're right in the midst of getting some bests for the police department. We've been awarded, and it's just a matter of getting everything done. The grant writer writes grants for the city and the county, and she works every single day. It's, it's unbelievable, the work she has to put into it. And then when you get the grant, she has to administer the grant. We administer the community corrections grant, we do the, uh, senior citizens grant.
Health department.
Health department.
CASA.
CASA, and numerous small grants, just numerous small grants. All that requires payroll, and she, she has to do all that. One person, half-time. So it's very, very difficult to, to keep up with it. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had two grant writers, and we used to have two grant writers, but, uh, at this point, we don't. Maybe, maybe the city and county should each have their own grant writer. I don't know, but it is very difficult. And some grants were not eligible for, and, uh, they're all gonna throw tar at me, but I've been working with Anna at, at the foundation and with Jessica, and in order to be eligible for DNR grants at the park, in the parks department, we have to have a park board. And as you know, several years ago, the park board was dissolved. There's two kinds of park boards you can have. One is a taxing unit, and one is a non-taxing unit. I believe the one we had was a non-taxing unit. It was administration. Ruby, you served on it. It was an administrative board. Uh, that was dissolved and done away with under the administration prior to us. If that's something that the city council wants to look at, uh, I'll be glad to look at it, uh, we'll, we'll try. But if you were here last time we met, the little lady that sat over there was from Shelbyville, she has met with Diana, she has met with Anna, and there, I've opened up a tremendous amount of DNR grants for different, different things. And, uh, we could do that if, if, if that's what you wanna do. That's, that's, you have to do it, I can't do it. Board of Works can't do it, it takes city council to do. So it's something you might think about.
Does that change the leadership of the park?
No.
No.
Uh, it just changes the administration of the park. Rather than the Board of Works running the park, a Board of Directors would run the park, reporting to the city council.
What about monies? What, where does that still come from? I mean, it...
The money would be the same as it is. Handled by the clerk treasure. All money in the city has to be handled by the clerk treasure. So...
Who would appoint that board, or would it be?
I think it's appointed by the city council and the mayor. That is all set up, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Would the council have a representative on it?
No, they, it's independent board. It's not a political board. It's non-political. Was there five or seven on there before, Ruby?
Seven.
Seven.
They probably have overlapping terms as well, I expect.
Start, you start out with terms, and then they stagger the terms.
So we need an ordinance to do that, correct?
It takes an ordinance. Anna came over and talked to me about it after you approved the ballpark thing, and, uh, she knows, she's got the lady coming down to tell her what's available. Um, she even offered to help write grants for us. And that's where you would get your grants to complete your project.
I thi- I think in this current climate, it's, it would probably, uh, be in our best interest to look at that. Um, I'm not sure if that's something we wanna do now, or if we wanna wait till December, but I think the bet, the sooner the better, in my opinion.
Would the council want on a committee to look into that and maybe meet with a grant writer or two, see where we can go? There's private grant writers out there we could use. They take a percentage, and some grants allow the percentage the grant writer takes to come out of the grant. They allow five percent in the grant for the grant writer, so we don't have to pay the grant writer. Fran, how do you feel about it?
I'm not sure. But that is a condition of getting any money from the DNR. Yeah, is there be a park board stat?
And some others, the, the, some of the baseball grants that we wanted to look at, uh, that come from Major League, uh, they want it to be non-political.
This would also take the position of the, uh, park superintendent away from the appointment of the ma- of the mayor, correct? And make, put that under the, the park board's realm.
Jurisdiction. That's how Mike Bottomley was hired and stayed here for many years, I think, what, fourteen years, did he?
Yeah.
Connie?
Is that a paid board? Is it paid?
No. Well, you weren't paid, were you?
I don't think it was. No. No, it's voluntary.
Of course, there's a lot of leeway in how you set it up. We would have to have a committee to choose the way it's set up.
And you were on council when that was put in, weren't you?
That's why, that's why it was initially started was because if we hadn't had much authority in order to qualify for grants.
You know why it was dissolved, Brian?
Yeah, why wasn't the council...
Fran and I were on the council, and because I think the wrong people were put on the board. I hate to say that, but I think that's what happened. And I'm not knocking you, Ruby, but, uh, there was a lot of controversy. Park board members changed rapidly. They didn't serve out terms, right?
And people didn't show up.
People wouldn't. So do you, would you agree with me, probably the wrong people were on the board?
Some of them was, yes.
I don't think anybody served their whole term out, did they? I didn't pay much attention, I wasn't on the council, I was on the council when it was dissolved.
Well, you had to have so many people on it, and after so many people didn't resolve, I mean, they quit, so we didn't go through it.
Tom, you got any?
Well, I, um, kinda like Fran, um, I, I like to have information. I mean, I, I like to know what, what a benefit to our community a park board would, would bring. Um, um, you know, in, kinda like what, like what Gabe said, I, I think we need to perhaps look into it. It, it, it may be beneficial.
Debbie, what do you feel?
I think we need to look into it.
You got some people, I, I kinda think maybe Jesse oughta chair that committee and meet with Anna, and you got some individuals you'd like to put on a committee to look at it? Since she knows all about the park, and she's running it right now, that might be a good idea for her to...
Steve Robertson was on it. Do you know that? Cheryl Mange is on it. I was on it, and...
Jeff Honigur wasn't he on it for a while? Jeff Honigur?
Yes, yes.
He was a public service owner.
What are your...
We got, uh, three mayor candidates sitting right before me. Would you like to give a comment on how you feel about a park board?
I think it's absolutely needed, because I do a lot with state contracts, uh, NDOT, like this year is the big National Guard. You know, they're, the government and the state are putting a lot of money in the National Guard. Two years ago, it was all towards NDOT facilities. This year, from all the talk, from dealing with all those companies, or all those entities, it's all going towards the DNR. And if we don't have a park board, just like you stated, we're not gonna be able to be eligible for the grants. Like a Main Street program, if we don't have a Main Street, you know, uh, board, whatever, we're not eligible for those. But if we don't have a parks board, we might as well not even apply for the grants. So I would think it's not gonna cost us anything if somebody's willing to volunteer. I would think enough people in the county or the city would be willing to volunteer. So if it's not gonna cost anything, but we're gonna be eligible for grants, to me, it's a win-win. That's how I feel.
Harold, you wanna comment on it?
Well, I think a park board...
Come on up here, Harold. I wanna be fair to all three of you here. You were on the board when we dissolved, but you sat right next to me.
Yes, and I can reason it was dissolved because of the people that was on there, and because they went out of control. But a park board does offer you some stability, and because you're not changing, you're not changing things all the time. 'Cause right now, you know, we was talking about the election right now, you're changing a whole, you can change a whole council, a whole Board of Works, all your, all your department heads in one move. And there's no stability. So it would offer stability, and, and that's what I would, I would do, yeah. I would look at it, 'cause it would offer stability.
Thank you. Uh, Connie?
I would say you have to look into it, because it is the way of the future when it comes to grants. I, I think that when you look into it, though, it would probably be wise to have an application process for that board, and really consider what has worked in the past and what hasn't worked, and then, you know, I don't know, go about it in a unique way, as far as not just appointing people to a board that have, um, served in the past, per se. Um, I think you get to look at how other communities have thought about selecting their board members. But absolutely, I think you have to look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In my home county, there's, I get the paper way up north, about six hundred miles, they advertise for board members for economic development, they advertise for board members, and they nominate a whole bunch of people, and then they elect those people by different groups. And I think what you said is, is right. If you advertise in the paper that, once the board was created, advertise in the paper that people that are interested and wanna serve, apply to it, and then those people be picked on the board, whoever would be doing the appointing, picked out of that group, then you might get some people that really wanna do it. Instead of, you pick on our friends, or their friends, or who used to be, maybe they don't have time or don't want to. So I think you guys are, are right. You spoke, David, you're a candidate too. Do you have a comment on it? I don't wanna miss anybody here, I don't wanna think that I'm unfair.
Well, I think it's something that should be looked into. I don't know the details of it, or what happened in the past, wasn't part of that, but I think that's something that'll be, come forward. What are the pros, what are the cons? What works, what doesn't work? I think you look at all of that and decide what to do. I think it's always good to look at if something will better a department or the community, always look at it. Uh, it may not be the thing for you, but I think you need to look at it and check out the pros and cons, what works, what doesn't, and, um, see what might better the community.
You spoke, would you like to speak again?
I just think that maybe you should have certain sectors that you're not necessarily all business people or all, uh, one sector in the community, even just citizens, you know, have different, have one representative from each sector. You'll get a, you'll get more of a cross-section if you do that. I think that's, I'm not sure, I don't remember, it's been fifteen years ago, yeah.
Well, everybody kinda wants to look, let's do it this way. I'm gonna ask each one of you council member to pick a board, a, a member of a committee to work with Jesse to look into this and report back to us at the first meeting in November. Okay? So each one of you individually, pick a person that you'd like to see on this committee.
Uh, your honor?
Give the names to Jesse.
Are there many people on the committee?
That'll be seven, we'll have eight on the committee.
Wait, wait a minute. I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to give Jesse a lot of work, but how, how about if we gave her an opportunity, if she has time, or if she wanted help, to, to look into the, uh, the pros of a, of a park board, or the negatives, and I'm sure Mike would have some input, 'cause he was superintendent for, you know, I mean, before we start deciding who's gonna be doing what and so forth, I mean, uh, I, I think everybody's receptive to a park, perhaps a park board, but if you could, if you have time, if you thought you had time, if you could look into it and see the, the pros and the cons of, of having a park board. I remember I talked to Mike a few years ago, and I asked him about that, and he said, "Well, at that particular time, uh, economic climate, there just wasn't, there just wasn't any grants at that time."
But you was working up there then, at that time, weren't you?
Mike, come in here and tell us what you know about it.
When we had it.
You probably don't want me to.
Come in anyway.
Um, first of all, I didn't want the board disbanded to begin with, but it has nothing to do with the board being out of control back then. It all had to do with two mayors couldn't get along. So, that's, that's the facts. But, um, it is good things. We applied for the grants. I mean, you lose, if you don't have a park board, you probably lose fifty percent of the grants that's out there. But they're also all matching, you have to have money to be in what, they're all, DNR's all eighty-twenty, so, um, you know...
Mike, when you say eighty-twenty, help me out here, what are you talking, what do you mean?
Eighty, we have the twenty, twenty percent match.
Okay.
So we have to have money to, to these things. And there is DNR grants for blockways and trails. I don't know about baseball fields, but there is some grants out there for it. We received one, if you remember, Ruby?
Yes.
We received one, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant, administration change, they pulled the grant and got rid of the park board.
Yeah.
We lost a grant. And DNR visited the site three or four times, you know.
I don't think it was that people not getting along, it was the two...
Yeah, that's all it was.
It wasn't, it wasn't me, I wasn't mayor, I know. I have no idea what you were talking about.
The park board started at a, really a bad time, because it was, and they did a great job, and it took a lot of heat. It, we got two trails of our parks back. And bef- before the board, um, everybody used it as a fundraiser, and nothing went back into the park. And, and that board tried to rein that in with the, with the clubs and the fair boards, and trying to get it where it generates revenue. And they took a lot of heat for that, not because they're causing trouble, 'cause that's what they was supposed to do.
Can the, do the matches for those grants have to come out of city funds, or can they be donations from other places?
It doesn't really matter, as long as you got...
It does not have to come out of city funds?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
It is a good thing, um, I mean, I mean, literally knows I've been wanting the park board back. I don't know if this is the perfect time, but, um, and how you assign park boards all depends on what you pick. There's four members, five members, seven members, and there is state ordinances or guidelines of how you assign people to these things, but...
Can we have eight? Was it eight, or...
We just have four.
Four, okay.
Way too many.
Okay, then...
Four is tough, because there's not odd amounts, sometimes we end up with a tie.
As I say, usually odd.
But Cheryl Mange is on it, Ivy's on it, and Steve Robertson, and I can't think of one lady.
Pat McDaniel?
Yes.
Bob Corning's on it.
There were different times, though, they were, they kinda came and went.
I wasn't with her, but.
Jesse, would you have, would you have an opportunity, would you have time?
Yeah.
To give us some information?
Became superintendent.
They hired you.
Before we kind of went on down the road?
And then we'd have a chance to think about somebody we might want on a committee to think about.
Jesse, I want you to get that information, work with Diana, the grant writer. She can probably work with Mike. Mike's got a little time, he's city employee.
I don't have time, it's too late.
You can pick his brain. And then get with Anna because she has worked with this lady that sat in that chair over there the other night. And she said she was reluctant to tell us because then she, we become her competitor because she's got a lot of grants. They got to administer grants over Shelbyville.
They have their own grant writer for their park system.
They do have, full-time?
I think they're a taxing.
They are.
Their park board is a taxing board.
They're taxing entity. That's what we were afraid of.
And then report back to us so we can get this thing moving. Seems like everybody wants to look at it, okay? That's, that's your assignment.
Is it, where do the rest, where do the board members, do they have to reside in the city limits?
Yes.
Yes, it has to be city.
The city board.
Most all city people, I mean, any city board has to be a city resident.
Well, you said county earlier.
There is a city, there is city-county park boards. And that's something that we look at.
But you would have to work, then your commissioners would form that board together. Commissioners talked to me about that, but I don't think that's the thing to do at this point.
I mean, I don't know the pros and cons.
I just wondered because the urban development, we had to choose somebody that lived in a certain area.
County people don't have a lot of parks. That's why I see my kind of, that's the reasoning went to ways.
You got any, Mike, any other wisdom for us?
Appreciate it, bud.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I, I don't know how we got off on that tangent. We were talking about Miss Lani's business. You got any Miss Lani's business?
Do I? No.
Connie?
Well, I do. I, I have some, something to discuss with Dave Counselor, but he's not here. I don't want to say the man's name, but I had a phone call today and it was a property owner that had, has recently, over the last few years, put some money into their property and sidewalks and just a lot of really nice things. And they live next to a business and the property is getting rundown. And they've act, they've interacted with Chief Counselor before and just today, they were, there was some people that were, I think, hauling scrap material. And there's been like some oil that's run on the, on the sidewalk. And he just brought it up that, you know, I'm sure the town, it's not the city's fault because I, and I tried to remind him of that, but that, that none of us would want anything like that to happen on the brand-new sidewalks of Grand Avenue. And I think we just have to, I'm sure Chief Counselor will, will intervene again like he did before. But we just have to, you know, keep in mind, we need to keep things nice. We just have so much mischief and, you know, with these fires that are, you know, perhaps being set, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to make the decisions up here to spend money on having nice things and then they don't stay nice. And I think that's kind of what we're known for and that it's a shame. And that's really all I have to say, but I, I told him that I would say something and I plan on discussing it with, with Chief Counselor and that's it.
We have a situation, we have an ordinance about grass. It has to be eight inches tall. And we have to send a letter out to the individual, tell them the grass is 10 inches tall. Either cut it or we're going to cut it. And we have to wait that 10 days. And then we have to respond and we have to send it over to the city garage to get it done. So you're probably talking 18, 20 days before it gets done. Well, grass grows a lot in 18, 20 days. So by that time, now it's 10, 12 inches tall. That's the only ordinance, it's the grass ordinance. We don't have an ordinance that says that we can go out and force somebody to take something out of their drive that's sitting there. Now, if a car doesn't have a license on it, we can tow it if it's on the street. And it's, you don't have an ordinance for every little thing. So things that happen, people, I've got junk stuff sitting on my desk right now that fell off a truck supposedly. I've sent the police out to talk to them and it looks like it fell off that truck. But we can't prove it and there's no ordinance that says other than a leaky load. Well, when you got two little pieces like this, is that a leaky load? So it's very difficult. The grass ordinance, yeah, it's right there in place, we can enforce it. But we can't force people to shovel the sidewalks. We can't force people to not pull their car up on the sidewalk if the driveway goes over the top of it and that's where we get those leaky oils. It's, it's very difficult.
Wait, did you hear that?
What?
They just kicked off. I heard it.
I didn't hear it.
I heard it. It was Minneapolis, I heard it.
My son says that the Colts will win hands down. There's no big deal to worry about.
Well, okay.
And he knows what's going on. All you guys got to do is make a, a motion to retire to. Did I hear a second? Two seconds? I didn't hear it.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on, you can do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.